I'd like to call our meeting of May the 18th, Ward of City Commissioners for Shawnee to order. Call and roll, please.
Aggie?
Here.
Terrell?
There.
Maynard?
Here.
Hall?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Dykstra?
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum. If you're able to stand, please stand in our invocation. We have our pastor from the greatest church in town, United Presbyterian.
Let us pray. God of all grace and glory, we pray for wisdom and for discernment and for your blessings to be upon our city commissioners and our mayor. We give you thanks for these proceedings and we pray for our city and our community. Amen.
Mr. Vice Mayor, would you lead us in the place of allegiance, please, sir?
Our position, attention, shalom. Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one on our agenda this evening is consider approval of the consent agenda.
I'd like to pull item F. Are we supposed to approve the agenda before the consent agenda or is it just?
No, it's the consent agenda.
Okay. I'd like to pull item F.
Second?
I may well adopt a consent agenda.
Oh, sorry.
With the exception of item F.
To pull, she doesn't have to move to, okay.
We have a motion to approve the agenda with item F.
Yeah, second.
We have, second, okay, I guess we'll vote. The motion passes, let's consider item number F. Commissioner Aggie, you wanted it pulled if you want to speak?
Okay, I pulled it so that I could vote on it.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Oh, okay.
Second?
Second, all right, maybe we have to vote on that again, yeah. Okay, I guess we have to vote. Motion carries. Okay, now it's your turn, Linda. Item F?
No, we approve it.
We approved F, yeah.
We just passed it because she said she didn't want to vote on it. That's why she wanted to pull it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Well, then that's done. Okay, I wondered why you didn't have any comments on it.
She didn't want to vote on it. We've got a lot to cover. We've got to be efficient.
Okay, citizens' participation. Anyone here? We encourage people to come forward and talk to us. And there's some ground rules at the ballgame, so please come forward and stand up and approach the podium, state your name, and sign the signing sheet, please, ma'am.
Good evening, commissioners and mayor. I come to you before you tonight to, I was here two weeks ago when you had your meeting to try to appoint somebody to fill that empty chair over there. And I have some concerns for that particular thing, that position of being filled there. And I feel that it's in the best interest, as a citizen of the Shawnee city of town here, born and raised here in Shawnee, not going anywhere, that it's the best interest of the citizens of Shawnee to have an election for this position. Because it was, it was really ridiculous sitting through all of that last two weeks ago. The six of you is, it's in the hands of 30,000 people here in Shawnee. And for you to be sitting there and can't make a decision, that's just ridiculous. So, the only outcome to that is to have an election for this position. So, I don't know what, what the reasoning is, if some of you are scared of an election. Elections are good, because the elections tells you that what the people want, the citizens of Shawnee, what they want and who they want to place there. It's not being appointed. I know the charter says that you can appoint, but listen to the people, the people of Shawnee, because they're the ones, they know what they want. You may be elected in there as your position now, but that seat there needs to be elected by the people. So, I'm telling you my opinion, and it's only my opinion. But according to a survey that I just seen on the website, there's 85% citizens here in Shawnee town that wants to see an election. There's 15% that do not. So I think the people have spoken about this particular issue, so I leave it into your hands. I like to see transparency on this, and I like to know what's going on as the citizen of Shawnee, because I pay my tax, my property taxes, and you're violating my right of voting for someone to be put in that position there. So, just come to you before you tonight and hoping that you come to some understanding of what needs to be done in the city of Shawnee. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to share anything with us? Okay, no one coming forward, forward then, to share anything else with us? We'll at this time move to item number three, which is a mayor's proclamation on Community Action Month. And Mr. Gordon, I believe we, you're here, right? Whereas community action agencies were created when the Economic Opportunity Act of 1964 was signed into law, and whereas community action agencies have a 51-year history of promoting self-sufficiency for those with limited income, and whereas the Central Oklahoma Community Action Agency is a member of a nationwide network of 1,100 community action agencies, and one of 19 agencies in Oklahoma, Central Oklahoma Community Action Agency serves six counties in Central Oklahoma: Cleveland, Lincoln, Payne, loaded, Potawatomi, and consumer. And whereas the Central Oklahoma Community Action Agency continues to lead the effort to eradicate poverty by assisting families through a variety of programs and services that include transportation, prescription assistance, housing, utilities assistance, senior programs, home weather compensation, and many others. And whereas the community action agencies help people and change lives embody a spirit of hope and make Oklahoma and America a better place to live, work, and play. And whereas Shawnee joins the national effort to designate May as Community Action Month to celebrate the success stories and honor the dedication of volunteers and the personal achievements of individuals who have benefited from the diverse programs of community action. Now therefore, I, Wes Maynard, mayor of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, by the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim this month of May 2015 as Community Action Month. Mr. Gordon, would you like to say something? You're free to.
Well, somebody else was supposed to follow on tonight, there was a change at the last moment. I just want to thank the city for proclaiming May Community Action Month, and for also to make a shout out to the Aveda Foundation, which has come behind us to help us get back on our feet. And hopefully the city will do the same when we put in our application for transportation grants in the city. Plaid, plaid. Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you. Okay, item number four is discussion, consideration, and possible action to appoint a city commissioner to the Ward One position to fill the open position left by Gary Vogel until the next regular city commission election in 2016. Chair is open for a motion in this matter.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we bypass this and go to a special election to fill this position. I believe that the people of Shawnee have spoken that we need a election process on this, and I still am adamant about that.
Help me understand, so maybe the rest of people, how does people of Shawnee have spoken?
I looked at the Shawnee News Star, there's a poll that they have online, apparently there's a number of people that are participating in that.
That may not be statistically relevant at all.
This was curious.
It may or may not, Commissioner Hall.
Okay. Are there any nominations for?
She made a motion.
She made a motion, I'm sorry. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
What was the, the motion is to have a special election for this item?
Yes.
So, how does that work with our charter, since our charter says to appoint?
Well, I think the bigger issue is you're not posted to take a vote on whether or not to have a special election. You're only posted to appoint a city commissioner. If you do not appoint one, or if you delay it again, you could put the motion for an election on the next time, but you're not properly posted for this item.
Well, we did, this language does allow for some latitude, I believe, City Attorney Carnes, does it not?
Not in my, not in my opinion. It does not mention the word "election" at all. And the open meeting law is pretty strict about the agenda reflecting, so that anybody who is a complete stranger could pick it up and know what you were going to discuss. And it doesn't discuss alternatives, it doesn't discuss election. It's very specific, is that your item is to appoint a commissioner. So, I mean, if you don't want to, if you don't appoint a commissioner tonight, and you want to put it on next time to discuss, consider, and possibly act on an election, you can certainly do that.
Then allow me to withdraw my motion and to change the language to state that I would like for this action, for city, to appoint a city commissioner to be changed and moved to the next meeting, to where we have, at that point in time, we had the language corrected to read that we have a special election.
So is the motion to take no action on this item, is that?
So, the motion, she withdrew the motion for, for discussion and, what was it, an action on a special election. We can't have a special election.
Right. I believe this is now a motion to continue this item.
No.
And to substitute language.
Yes.
At the next meeting, or to add language, whatever, to allow for you to call a special election, if that is your choice to do so.
I don't, I guess I don't understand, is, if you continue this, then is it still to either make an appointment or call an election?
It would depend on what you ask to be put on the agenda. We have a request from Commissioner Shaw's, I hear, to put that on the agenda.
I have a motion on the floor to remove this language in its entirety. To replace this language, to not do an appointment, but to move to a special election.
Okay, I'm concerned that to some extent that's still putting something on the agenda that's not on the agenda. If you would like to move the item, and then as in the normal course of business, ask for that motion, that's easy to do. And if someone else wants the same to be on, then you have your option to do either one.
Okay, City Attorney Carnes, how do we remove this language in its entirety and go to a special, and allow for me to modify this and place language on the next meeting that we have to allow for a special election?
As I said, you can continue this, this item this time, then at your request, we can prepare an item requesting a special election. We can also, at the request of someone else, leave the same, this same language, and then you once again have it in the alternative. I don't, given the way this is worded and the fact that the election is not on here at all, you can defeat, you know, be unable to appoint and move on to something else, or you can delay this. But you cannot, in this meeting, in my opinion, take this item and somehow manipulate it so that it becomes another item by trying to amend it here.
So can I table this item in your legal opinion?
You can table the item.
I am making a motion to table this item indefinitely.
Motion to table requires a second, and it is not debatable.
I'll second it.
Not debatable.
Not debatable.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, James.
You could ask a question, but it's not debatable.
I just wondering how in the world we knew about the survey, because I read the paper and all.
Well, yeah.
So, so a yes vote will table it, a no vote won't table it?
That's correct. A yes vote tables it indefinitely.
So, we're, so if we table it, we're not going to, and it's indefinitely, so we, until someone puts it on the agenda for next?
If someone wants it back on the agenda next time, they would have to ask to have put on the agenda a motion to remove from the table and be in consideration of the item.
Just so I know, like, I'm making sure I understand this. We have, we have, the candidates are here tonight to be either nominated and voted.
Okay, we're straying into debate. A motion to table is not debatable. So it means you vote it up or down, once it's made.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, any more questions? If not, then let's vote.
It is not tabled.
Motion to appoint Dale Curbs. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Linda, you made a passionate plea for Dale last week, or last meeting, two weeks ago.
I don't think it's your responsibility to monitor my votes.
It's not, but I'm just curious, I mean, you made a passionate plea.
And I don't have to defend my vote, I am a commissioner, just like you.
I'm sure somebody.
Commissioner Hall, you talked, I think you need to refrain from that.
Okay, and, okay, is there any other nominations? Mr. Dykstra, you have one?
Not at this time. I, there's five other folks that have good ideas up here, so.
All right, I'll make another one. Motion to appoint John Winteringer.
We have a second. Have a motion and a second. John Winteringer, okay. Okay, let's vote.
Back where we started, brother.
Back where we started from.
Motion to appoint Regina Morton. Yeah, but just don't go down the list. Yeah, let's go down the list.
Second?
Alternative is let somebody buy an election.
Who are you referring to, buying an election that's inappropriate?
Same people that bought the last election.
That is inappropriate?
Hey, wait a minute. Both of you need to calm down, okay?
Thank you.
We've got a long day, guys.
Yep. Motion fails. One more motion. Mr. Kirkland?
Yeah.
You want to make that motion?
I may, we, I want, Mr. Kirkland.
No, Nate, Mr. Kirkland, do you have a second? I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, let's vote. Gives everybody a fair shot. Motion fails, we're right where we started. Congratulations, commission.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to item number six. A public hearing and consideration of approving an ordinance to rezone with a conditional use permit for property located at 731 East Independence from C3, Highway Commercial to C3 Highway Commercial with a conditional use permit. Case PO3-15 applicant Lottie Good Cootie, okay. Planning Commission deferred this item at the last meeting, is that, help, come on up and share with us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. Yes, the Planning Commission has chosen to defer this item to the June 3 Planning Commission Agenda, which would therefore make it the June 15 City Commission Agenda.
Okay.
Move to defer.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, let's vote. Motion carries. Item number seven, a public hearing and consideration of approving an ordinance to rezone with a conditional use permit for property located at 126 South Center Avenue from R3 multifamily residential district to C-1P neighborhood commercial with a conditional use permit, case number PO5-15. It will take a staff report in this matter.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, I'll actually give this one, as I've had some personal involvement in this process. Case PO515 involves the proposed community market of Potawatomi County, which is a food resource center, and is a model that is being implemented throughout the state by the Regional Food Bank of Oklahoma. The applicants desire to construct a 10,000-square-foot building to be utilized for various community purposes, with the primary use being a food resource center. Those of you that are familiar with this location know that it is the home of Mission Shawnee. Mission Shawnee runs a, has been involved in providing food in the community for many years, and it's also part of the overall complex there that at one time was owned by Emmanuel Baptist Church, and is also the location of Fresh Fire Church there at the corner of South Eden and East Main. The, included in your packet is the staff report that was reviewed, prepared by staff and reviewed by the Planning Commission. In that is exhibit, or figure one, which indicates the approximate location of the building. It would utilize existing developed site with existing parking. There is a residence on the property that would be removed, and so in that sense, it would remove that residence, which probably fits a definition of dilapidated in its current condition. This case was heard before the Planning Commission on May 6, and they did forward a recommendation of approval. I want to briefly talk about what a food resource center is, and then, and then go over the zoning conditions, and then answer any questions that you have. A food resource center is a, is a new model of basically a community food bank, and it functions very similar to a grocery store model, where currently you may be familiar with food bank or a, different food operations in town, where people maybe line up one day a week for a couple of hours. And under this proposal, it's more of a typical grocery store, where someone can, can, where there's extended hours, multiple days a week, where the public would be able to utilize it, and so there would not be traffic impacts and impacts that we might associate sometimes with these operations, well-meaning as they are. As I mentioned earlier, this is part of a, of a regional approach to delivery of service, and there are a number of these that are planned. Included in your packet is exhibit three, which shows where these are existing throughout the state, and where they, and where they are also proposed. There are, they exist already in Oklahoma County. There's one in the city of Moore, in the city of Oklahoma City. And the estimated value of construction for this is about $1 million, with major funding provided by the Regional Food Bank of Oklahoma and the Aveda Foundation. In terms of the Shawnee zoning code, getting back to, to this as a permitted use, grocery stores are permitted use in the C1 zone. This property is currently zoned R3, high-density residential, which obviously doesn't make a lot of sense, because the property's been used for church and for similar religiously affiliated operations for many years, and has really had no residential component. But nonetheless, it is zoned residential, and they are requesting a rezone to C1, which permits a grocery store. In addition, because some of the uses of the building would be not necessarily similar to a grocery store, such as community functions, be a community meeting room, demonstration kitchen, perhaps community gardens nearby, we felt like it also fit under the qualifications of a social assistance, welfare, or charitable service, which kicks in the requirement for a conditional use permit. So, what you have before you is a request for a rezone from R3 to C1 with the issuance of a conditional use permit, and there are three conditions noted that were forwarded by the Planning Commission. Be happy to answer any questions that you have, and the applicants are also in the audience if you have questions.
Is it your recommendation, on it?
Yes, sir, it is staff recommendation that this be approved.
Is, what's the service area? Is it for Shawnee proper, or is it the whole, like Tecumseh and other surrounding cities as well? Because is this the only one in Pot County?
This is the only one in Potawatomi County, so it is, it is a regional service center, yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll have folks coming in from everywhere to, to get groceries and?
That's correct. They will not be limited based on, on single limit residency.
I was just really kind of happy that we're getting it, so.
Is other areas pleased with this type of resource being available in their communities?
It's my understanding that they are. I did include in the packets some photographs of how these facilities, what, how they resemble in other communities. They're very attractive. It will, of course, meet all of the city codes related to aesthetic design. And so I have heard nothing but positive feedback on, on this proposal. We, of course, did our typical public notice requirements, and we did not receive any comments in opposition, either written comments or oral comments at the Planning Commission hearing.
Is it like the regional food bank, where, where groups get together and they, they form teams and they go in volunteer hours?
There certainly will be a volunteer component, but there's also paid full-time staff that will, that will operate this facility.
Okay. What are the hours of operation? Do you know that yet?
I do not, but the applicant can certainly comment on that.
It's not a, where's the applicant at?
Any other questions for me before?
Wait till we have a hearing.
Wait till we have a hearing. Okay.
Okay, any questions for, okay? If not, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, I will open a public, our public hearing. I call for those that are in favor of this matter to speak first. Limit your comments to three minutes, and then I'll let the people that are opposed to this. So if you're, would like to come forward and share anything with us, please feel free to come forward.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Daniel Matthews, I'm the chairman of the board for the community market of Potawatomi County. We are excited to bring this opportunity to Shawnee. As the associate pastor of Family Faith Church, we've been operating our pantry out of our church for the last seven years, serving last year over 5,000 people. We are excited for just all the potential it has for the community, the streamlining of services, the, what we can all do when we work together. Obviously, the support of the Regional Food Bank and Aveda have been very key in bringing this. To answer Commissioner Dykstra's question, right now we anticipate probably four days a week being open, four to six hours at a time. Obviously, that's kind of as we gauge the need in the community and what hours work best. We're excited about the location. We've been searching for the proper location now for almost two years, and this has brought us to this moment, but we're excited for what, I think initial, we anticipate probably helping 1,500 families a month through this facility, bring, bring the community together with the demonstration kitchen and other community services that we'll be able to offer. Another thing that's a real passion of our board is, is case management, helping people not just by giving them food, which will obviously be a tool, but helping them improve their overall lifestyle and things like that. So, we're excited. I urge you to pass the rezone so we can get to work as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Can you educate me on what kind of staffing that you have?
Sure. Initially, we will be hiring a full-time director. As, as we kind of get it, there could be also a volunteer coordinator that we hire. Sometimes they hire those, sometimes they're a volunteer coordinator, is a volunteer position. We'll kind of be judging our staff needs as we go along, but for sure, at least one to two full-time employees, we anticipate, warehouse managers, those kinds of people.
What is your estimated population? I mean, you've worked these in different areas, about how many do you kind of estimate will?
I think that question needs probably go to Mr. Bivins.
It probably needs to go, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, he comes up, I will just tell you, we're pretty honored to have Mr. Bivins here. I will tell you, this is one of the most wonderful human beings I've ever met in what he has done for the western half of this state, in the food bank program, and what you've done in Oklahoma City and your program. We are honored to have you here, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I didn't hear your question, I'm sorry.
I was just asking about how many people do you anticipate? I was just asking about how many people do you anticipate will benefit from this kind of resource in the community?
Our estimate in Potawatomi County, there's about 11,360 people that would qualify for the services at the food resource center. Obviously, in some areas, they would go to their own sources and outlying areas that we would also provide food to, so they wouldn't necessarily all be served out of this one food resource center. I will say, if I may...
You can say whatever.
We have nine of these currently open that we've helped open. We have another six of them in some form of approval at the city level, are in architectural drawings. As example, the city of Weatherford has given us a 25-year lease on their National Guard armory to use as a food resource center. We had a corporation in Woodward that donated a 20,000-square-foot building to us for a food resource center. We're purchasing a building in Ardmore. Durant just recently opened. We're opening one in Choctaw, Oklahoma, and also in Ponca City. We just purchased a building in Ponca City. So this will be...we'll have 15 after that, hopefully by the end of this year.
How do you determine, just if you wouldn't mind educating me, where to place these particular food banks at?
Well, I don't want to offend anybody. We had a group of students from University of Oklahoma that actually spent six months studying our whole distribution system throughout central and western Oklahoma and made recommendations where a food resource center should go, based on population, poverty, obviously where you can move trucks in and out, things of that nature. Generally takes about 15,000 population or above to be able to sustain a food resource center at the level we think it needs to be sustained.
Thank you.
Sure.
From, like, say, tonight it gets approved, when would this place be ready if everything worked well?
Well, soon we get the...we have the temporary designs for the building already. We'll finish those up. We'll do architectural plans. We'll submit those to the city for permits, and we'll start construction hopefully within 30 to 60 days. It'll be completed by the end of this year at the latest, hopefully early this fall sometime.
Great.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward and speak in favor of this? Is there anyone then here who'd like to come forward and speak against it? If not, then discussion?
I move we approve the rezoning.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Okay, sir. Read the title, please, Mayor.
No.
This is an ordinance to rezone with conditional use permit. The property located at 126 South Center Avenue from R3 multifamily residential district to C1P neighborhood commercial with the conditional use permit.
Okay, let's vote. Motion carries. Item number eight is a public hearing in consideration of approval on an ordinance to rezone property located at 602 East Highland Street from C1 neighborhood commercial to C3 highway commercial. We'll take a staff report in that matter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. The applicant in this case would like to, again, rezone the site from C1 neighborhood commercial to C3 highway commercial in order to use the property as a tattoo parlor. As the site currently sits, the location here would be on northeast corner of Highland Street and Pennsylvania Avenue. In its current state, it is legally non-conforming at this time as a C1 property, and staff as well as the Planning Commission have recommended denial on this particular case for the following reasons, the following non-conforming issues. First of which, two primary structures exist on this site, one of which being the property located to the west, which they would do a tattoo parlor in. Just east of this is a residence that is currently occupied by renters, as far as I understand. Adequate parking does not exist on this current site for the change in use. The move from C1 to C3 would require having 10,000-square-foot area for this site, and as it currently sits, it's roughly 8,750, so it would be significantly under the amount required for the C3 designation. Minimum frontage requirements aren't met as they would be 25 feet, and these structures sit just off the right-of-way there. And again, maximum site covered for C3 would be 30 percent. With both structures on site, it's roughly at 45 percent capacity at this point. So this rezone would really serve to further the non-conformance on this property. So again, staff will recommend denial on this.
So what was the intent of this rezoning?
Intent was to do a tattoo parlor on site.
Tattoo parlor?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't understand.
Here, I'll draw one. The properties that are to the north...
I'll draw one on your...
Okay.
You know how it kind of looks like an L? What did you say? Are those properties, are those houses, or...
There are houses, and there's actually a church on the other side, on the same block, I believe, to the north.
Okay.
Which also brings a threshold of the state mandated 1,000 feet from a church as well for this specific property and tattoo parlor.
And all of the reasons it was denied was explained to the applicant?
Yes.
Okay.
The idea for the applicant was to give it a try, to see if it would still be possible, but also for the staff to consider moving tattoo parlors to C1 based on the intensity of use. After further research and checking state code, it looks like for this specific site, that wouldn't be possible.
Okay, and your recommendation?
Recommend denial.
Denial, okay. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to come forward and speak in favor of this matter? Seeing no one coming forward, is there anyone like to come forward and oppose this matter? Seeing no one come forward in that matter, then I will close our public hearing. We have a staff recommendation.
I move that we adopt the staff's recommendation and deny the rezoning.
Wait, wait. We got to do a positive, you know, we got...this is the thing that's confusing me because the Planning Commission didn't do it, right? That was what...
Well, if the Planning Commission doesn't approve the ordinance, Shawnee has a history of when you're going to deny something like this, you just deny it, and then there's no real track record, and it's hard to find the ordinance.
So you got to make a motion to approve...
You need a motion to...
And then vote no against it.
And then just say, you know, if everybody wants to vote against it, that's fine. Otherwise...
Motion and affirmative.
It has to be in the affirmative.
Yeah, okay.
But that also gives you...it gives you a record of what is happening.
So James made a motion to approve the tattoo parlor.
Not yet. No, he's talking. He's talking.
No, now, wait a minute.
That'll be on some literature someplace.
Now, the motion can also fail by lack of a second.
Well, it could, but again, if you have an ordinance that you can track, that's been my concern for some time, is that we don't have a tracking mechanism, so.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve it. Do we have a...
Second.
We have a second. Okay. And a motion...let me understand. So I'm a little confused. If I vote yes, that means...
You get a tattoo parlor.
Well, no, no. I don't want a slam tattoo parlor. All I want to do is just say...
You get the rezoning.
If we vote no, then we...
We're C3 zoning.
Okay, okay. Okay, let's vote.
Denial.
Okay. Mr. Harrod, your motion failed.
No, I'm sorry.
Item number nine, a public hearing in consideration of approving an ordinance to rezone with a conditional use permit for property located at 302 South Beard Street from I-2, I guess, to light industrial to I-3 heavy industrial district with a conditional use permit. Applicant Michael S. Klein. And it says the application was withdrawn prior to the Planning Commission on May 4th?
It's correct, Mr. Mayor. We don't need any action from the commission.
No action required on this since it was withdrawn. Okay?
Is that all right, Mayor?
Yes, the reason it's on is because it was already posted to be on, but it doesn't need any action.
Item number 10, a public hearing in consideration of ordinance, rezone the property located on Highland and Kimberly Street from R2 combined residential and R3 multifamily residential to PUD. Planned unit development, case number PO8-15. Could we have a staff report in this matter?
Thank you again. The subject property here is roughly three and a half acres in size and is located north of Highland Street on Kimberly Avenue. This would be attachment item 10, which I handed to the Commissioners here.
Which one was it?
Item 10.
Second Fox, Mr. Kimberley.
Second Fox Nation. So again, this site is located north of Highland Street on Kimberly Avenue. If you look to the south, currently exists what would be four quadplexes and two duplexes on site with off-street parking. The applicant is essentially requesting to build on the north end two proposed apartment complexes with a total of 23 units on them with on-street parking to the amount of 41 parking spaces, four of which would be handicap spaces. Based on the nature, being R2 and R3 in this area with commercial activity along Highland and the near area, this does conform to our comprehensive plan. Staff has no objection to the overall rezone to a planned unit development. What staff would require on this side as we move forward to preliminary and final plat, if approved, would be a six-foot sidewalk along Highland Street. Stormwater detention to be planned, designed, and approved by the city engineer. If you look, it is shown here on the northwest corner of the site, but again, the actual plans will need to be approved by the city engineer. As is the planned unit development, staff would require amenities on the outdoor, open space-type areas. This might include a gazebo, walk path, those sort of things. Both these apartment complexes would be suggested for potential young family and elderly citizen rental housing on this site. Sanitary sewer and water do exist on this site, and the overall plan would be to convert this from a public right-of-way to a private easement in Kimberly Street here. Therefore, the owner-applicant would take over maintenance on...
They already have housing on both sides of everything north there, don't they?
Correct. So...
And what's property taxable, like that? Or is this going to be in trust? It's being trust?
In trust, I believe.
So the school doesn't...
Admin and trustee.
Doesn't pay a bit of money anyway at all?
I'm not sure it's in trust. I think it's a housing authority.
That's true. Excuse me.
And a housing authority regardless of who owns it, as example.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Did you have any conditions?
We have here listed the one condition that would, again, be pushed forward to the plating process here, which would be developers should adhere to the proper procedure for having the public right-of-way closed in the...
Six-foot sidewalk.
Correct. Private easement dictated there.
And they've indicated they had no issue with doing that?
Correct. It was approved by all members of the Planning Commission.
And all we're voting here is for the rezoning, correct?
That's exactly right. It's just the planned unit development rezone, not the preliminary plat or final plat.
Thank you.
Your recommendation?
Recommend approval.
Have a staff report. I'll open a public hearing then at this time. All those in favor like to come forward and speak in the matter?
Please...
Please state...
Favor of or opposed to?
Well, please state your name and...
Jerry Mankin.
Okay, Jerry.
The notification that I got in the mail includes property that I own. I own the property at 516 North Roosevelt, and it looks like somebody's decided to rezone it for some other purpose. I'm curious about what that means to me. Is that something that's standard procedure to rezone property that belongs to someone else, or has there been a mistake made here? And I'm interested to know what this means to me. What can I do with my property now?
Okay. Good question.
Can the staff address that question?
See right here, that was a mistake on the printing of these properties right here on Roosevelt, so the PUD would actually be incorporated on those properties against Kimberly Street right there, so it wouldn't actually touch those.
Excuse me.
So for the record, you're saying that's not his property that's involved?
Do we need to correct the paperwork?
This...any gives mark around my property.
Okay, sir.
But what he's telling me is that it's not included in the application.
The legal description dictates the property.
I just want to make sure that the legal description is correct.
Correct.
Okay.
I don't suppose I have any opposition to it, then.
Okay, sir.
Can you tell me what's planned for this little arm out here?
They don't involve that currently. To clarify a bit more, the whole plat was the entire property that includes those along Roosevelt there, so it's a replat of a portion of that actual plat that exists. So by putting it out in the paper, it was the entire plat portion would be those minus the properties that are already owned, or own or own properties on Roosevelt Street.
Well, thank you for having such a good eye on noticing that, Mr. Mankin. Okay, I believe if someone else likes to speak in favor of this matter.
I'm Richard Landy. It's Landy's Engineering representing Sac and Fox. To answer his question, yes, the Sac and Fox addition was platted in 1976, which is a replat of, I think, Beard Edition Lot 16, and so the use has transferred over the period of time. The gentleman asked the question, it was when it was replatted as Sac and Fox addition, it was in three blocks, and we're asking for a PUD on blocks one and two. Block three was in individual homes, and it's been successful. All those lots have gone into private ownership, as the gentleman just spoke. The intent of this project would be to add 22 additional housing units. The plat would be in non-conformance with today's standards because the parking is on-street, and that was one of the first things that came about, is we could not continue with on-street parking, and so the best method to go would be to a planned unit development, where in fact the parking would be authorized in accordance with the ordinance. So the request is to replat box one and two of the Sac and Fox addition to a PUD with intent that we would add about 23 additional housing units. It's ready to go. The backlog of housing for the Sac and Fox Housing Authority, this will not take care of probably more than 20%, 25%. So the need for additional housing is desperate need, and so this is the first action to try to take to increase that housing ability. Back when it was done, there was no requirements for stormwater detention, so they would be upgraded to include that portion. City utilities have been on there for...since 1976. No change in the easement, right-of-way, or changes. It is rather unique, first one I've ever done in my career, because I've never tried to take a road out of public. But now...
Everybody wants a man.
For the development purposes, this is, in my opinion, the best route to go, and I'd be glad to answer any questions. Staff will work closely. I think we'll get it done. We do have to go to plat vacation, and with your authority, that allows us to proceed. Be glad to answer any questions.
I notice on the ownership list that you have the state of Oklahoma several here listed several times. Does...do you get any type of response from the state of Oklahoma when you send these out, just to educate me?
I'm sure I'm not sure I'm understanding.
On your ownership list that you sent out, do you, as the contractor, just...okay?
The city does actually provide that notice, and I believe the notice department here for ODOD is because they still retain ownership on the right-of-way along...
Okay.
Highland and...
Highland.
Do they have to respond back to you just...
They're not required to respond back. We're required to notify them, but I would say most individuals don't respond back.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just...this is just kind of a question. Are you going to have any, like, safe room or some kind of a place for the folks in that area? I didn't see anything on the other ones, but...
The unit to the west has a full safe room, meeting room. Plans, the preliminary floor plans have been submitted to staff. Like I say, if this can proceed on... Like I say, if this can proceed on, the plans have already been drawn, and hopefully we'll the detailed plans, as soon as vacating the, we get through the procedures of vacating the plat, we would hope to break ground this summer.
Okay. But it will have, like, tornadoed shelter?
Yes.
Roger.
There was one in the past, and due to deterioration, whatever, was removed. Back in seventy-six, there were two additional facilities onsite, which had been removed with the changing of different Native American activities. That demolition occurred about seven or eight years ago. Foundations, area is still in place, so we may hopefully start demolition as soon as allowable, and give the, hopefully award contract and proceed on very soon. Any other questions I can have?
Thanks. Anyone else like to speak in favor of this matter? If not, is there anyone like to come forward and speak opposed to this matter? No one coming forward in that matter, then? Then I will close our public hearing. We've heard a staff recommendation. I would like to have just a little discussion on this matter. If we vote for this, this doesn't mean we're allowing them to start tearing down buildings or construction or anything. They've got to submit plans to, back to the planning commission and all of that. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This, just to put it in hood, right?
Yes, sir.
Right. Just the reason.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you read the title, please, ma'am?
This is an ordinance which would rezone property located generally at Highland and Kimberly Street in Shawnee, Oklahoma, and more particularly in the Sac and Fox addition, a replat of Lot 16, Remington Beard Edition, a part of the southeast quarter of Section Seventeen Township, ten north, range four east of the Indian Meridian in Potawatomi County. It would rezone it from R2 combined residential and R3 multifamily residential to PUD, Planned Unit Development.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion carries. Item number eleven, public hearing and consideration of approval of an ordinance to rezone property located at Harrison Street, north of Wolverine Road, from A1 rural agriculture to I3 heavy industrial. Can we not take another staff report on that matter, please, sir?
The applicant has requested to defer this city commission action to June first. City commission?
I'm sorry?
The applicant wishes to defer to June first.
Defer till June first, okay. So will be no action on this matter?
Need a motion to?
Motion to defer.
To defer.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to defer. Any discussion? If not, let's vote.
Is there a difference between defer and table?
If you defer, the question is whether there's a difference.
Motion carries.
I'm sorry, whether there's a difference between a motion to defer and a motion to table. When you defer or continue, you're doing it to a date certain. It will come back on that particular day. When you table, it can be either, the next time, it can be indefinitely, but once it's tabled, it can come back at any time. We just need to post that somebody has the intention to lift it from the table.
Okay. Item number twelve is consideration of approval of a preliminary plat for North Harrison Industrial Park located in Harrison Street, north of Wolverine Road, case number SO five dash one fifteen. The applicant is the Landrum Group. Staff recommendation?
Once again, applicant has requested to defer to June first. City commission agenda?
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion to defer this. Have a motion by Vice Mayor Eric. Do I have a second?
Second. Ladies first.
Commissioner Daxter, second, then we will, let's vote. Motion carries. Item number thirteen, a public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to rezone the property located on Kickapoo Street, north of MacArthur Street, from PUD, Planned Unit Development to PUD, Planned Unit Development, case P ten dash fifteen. Applicant, the Landrum Group, but we'll take a staff report on that matter, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm going to do a joint staff report here for agenda item thirteen, case to rezone to PUD, and item fourteen for the preliminary plat for the same property. Once I do my report, I will dictate my recommendations for each one, along with any conditions that are set individually.
Okay, sir.
The applicant here is requesting planned unit development approval and preliminary plat approval for this site. It is located north of MacArthur Street on Kickapoo, which would be just north of the Dollar General and just south of the current medical complex, complex known as the Velagio Edition. It currently exists as a PUD, as part of the Velagio Edition, so what is really being requested is a brand-new PUD on this specific site with its own design guidelines and map provided, so the zoning itself wouldn't change, but the project would be completely separate The site is roughly three acres in size, and would be a total of three lots on this site, the first of which would be on the north end. There will be three shared drives requested on this site, the first of which would be combined on the north, Lot One, with Velagio to the north. The second shared drive will be on the south, connecting Dollar General and Lot Three. And the third shared drive would actually be between lots two and lots three, and there will be a common access agreement between all three of these throughout the site here. The entire site currently is served by both city water and sewer, and there will be required a six-foot sidewalk along Kickapoo Street for the entire extent. Drainage was one of the, one of the first issues that came up, and so at this point, we feel comfortable with this. Lot One will actually detain to the west into a detention pond and be released at pre-development rates along the drainage channel to the northwest. Lots Two and Three will be pumped to the sanitary sewer system on Kickapoo Street. That is after, of course, review with the city engineer. Staff does recommend approval for the planned unit development, and we have two conditions listed for the first, first case here. The first of which to submit, supplemental approval and incorporation of proposed access agreements and their instrument numbers into the PUD design statement. They've been shown on the plat, but do not exist on the actual documentation, so that needs to be added as a condition for the approval. And the second condition here would be Section Eighteen D shall be corrected. All utility meters shall be placed within the utility easement. It had been written in the design statement that the water meter would be actually next to the property, leaving maintenance up to the city for that private line there, so we need it actually to be in the utility easement. So that's just a clarification on, on a couple technical issues there within the actual report. So staff does recommend approval for the planned unit development. For preliminary plat, staff once again does approve, does recommend approval on this site with five conditions. First of which being final construction documents must be approved by the city engineer concurrent with final plat approval, along with the engineering drainage plan, which would be condition two. Six-foot sidewalk would be required along Kickapoo Street, and supplemental appropriate documentation, again, for the cross-access agreements that are necessary for this site, and of course, all other applicable city standards. So staff does recommend approval for both cases with conditions.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll open a public hearing in this matter. Anyone here like to come and speak in favor of this?
Julie Landies of the Landrum Group, and I'm just here to answer any questions. We are aware of the conditions, and there are no problems with any of those, so if you guys have any questions, let me know.
Okay, thank you very much.
Motion to approve.
Whoa, 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 wait, wait, wait. Hang on, we got to let somebody in my people.
They're opposed.
So hang on, would anyone like to come forward? Get you that?
No, I'm just signing in.
Okay, we'll let you sign in. Is there anyone here that would like to come forward and speak against this matter? Okay, no one coming forward then at this time? Then I will close our public hearing. We've heard a staff recommendation, okay? Any discussion on this matter? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
Now, are you sure you're ready?
Motion to approve with the noted conditions.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Okay, let's vote. I guess you should have read the title before I voted. Sorry about that.
I'd be happy to backtrack and do that.
Okay, let's do that. Would you read it?
We're going to re-vote, or?
No, just put it in the record. This is an ordinance to rezone property on Kickapoo, north of MacArthur. It's a three-point-nine acre tract located generally in the southeast quarter of Section One Township, ten north, range three east of Potawatomi County, from PUD, Planned Unit Development to PUD, Planned Unit Development. I think there's something missing there. Is that right?
No, no, one was Velagio, but this is its own separate thing, is what.
This is Kickapoo Plaza. Didn't I read that right?
You did, you read it right.
It's put to put.
Okay.
Okay, the motion carried after your reading. Thank you very much. Item number fourteen is consideration approval of preliminary plat for Kickapoo Plaza located on Kickapoo Street, north of MacArthur Street, case SO six dash fifteen. The applicant is the Landrum Group. The staff has given us a recommendation with the five conditions.
Stop, please.
We have a motion by the Vice Mayor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Motion carries. Okay. Item number fifteen, discussion, consideration, possible action to approve an ordinance to adopt the Downtown Property Maintenance Code. Could we have a department speak to this matter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm happy to speak to this matter. The proposed Downtown Property Maintenance Code has been in development for approximately six months, and we've worked closely with the Downtown Task Force, which is a Chamber of Commerce Committee. Commissioner AG is on that committee, and other downtown merchants and staff and other people that care immensely about downtown. So this has been an ongoing process. The planning commission held a workshop specifically to discuss this ordinance on April first, and we dedicated the entire meeting to refinement of the ordinance, and then on May sixth, they held a public hearing and did issue a recommendation of approval to this body. This code, as proposed, will apply to all properties on C four, which is Downtown Business District. It includes standards for interior and exterior maintenance of properties, but the primary focus is on exterior property maintenance. The enforcement process allows owners time to take corrective action, but also allows for the issuance of a citation as a last resort. The goal is definitely for voluntary compliance, and we don't expect, hopefully, to issue very many citations, and it's certainly not designed to raise revenue in the least. We really are hoping for voluntary compliance. And the intended result is that the buildings downtown contribute positively to downtown, and that they don't negatively impact adjacent properties. The ordinance is attached to your memorandum and recommendation. Be happy to answer any questions that you have on it. I wasn't going to go through it in detail, but you'll note that about seventy-five, eighty percent of the standards relate to exterior maintenance, and just a small subsection relates to interior building maintenance, with the primary focus being issues of dampness or where roofs are leaking. We've had several reports downtown. Of course, many of the buildings are attached, and where we've had properties, active businesses have issues with inactive properties next door that are causing them direct harm, and so that's the primary focus of the interior building standards. The enforcement process is modeled after what we do now for nuisance abatement, in that the property owners are given an initial notice, there's time for them to comply, there's, if they need additional time, maybe there's weather delays, or they're just getting their items together, and there's allowances for staff to give extensions, and then ultimately the ability to issue a citation if no, no action is being taken. Someone has a major repair that they need to do, and they pull a building permit, a remodel permit, then they'll be operating under that timeframe, which is a six-month permit with renewals every six months potentially, if they're making progress. So again, this is really designed to help push people in the right direction and have their buildings contribute positively, and really not impact negatively their neighbors downtown. Be happy to answer any questions that you have. We've had no written comments in opposition. I've spoken about this matter at merchant meetings and, of course, at the Chamber of Commerce Committee, and the feeling that I get generally is very positive from those individuals that have active businesses downtown.
This ordinance is based on existing code, right? There's no new code. It's just an ordinance that makes the local enforcement area in the C four.
That's correct. We do have, we do have the basic framework for many of these regulations in kind of disparate parts of the code, but this brings it all together, provides a unified enforcement process, and clarifies that it's, that it's for downtown specifically.
What is downtown exactly? Is it Main Street, the whole Main Street, or is it Main and Beard? Can you explain where downtown is? Because.
Yeah, that's an excellent question. I think you can define downtown several different ways. The way the zoning code defines the central business district is those properties that are, that are zone central business district or C four, and that is generally south of, that is south of Highland and along Main Street, basically two blocks west of Beard all the way to Harrison on the, on the east side, and then it kind of zigs and zags. I wish I had a map here for you, but certainly there's, sometimes generally when people refer to downtown, they, they mean other areas, or maybe, maybe they pick south of Wall Street, or have some other qualifier, but, but how we mean it in the code is specifically C four zone properties.
C four. If, I guess I'm worried about, there's some places that are east of, like Hamburger King, back over that way.
Yes, sir.
I mean, did you talk to those business owners as well that, you know, and kind of get a feel for, like, let them know that this is coming up?
Excellent, excellent point. I certainly haven't spoken to every, every property owner, but we've been talking about this a lot for six months or so, and we've had, we've had a lot of, a lot of questions, a lot of comments. It's changed a lot from its initial draft form. I would say that I think the, I think the effectiveness is in how it's, in how it's implemented, and codes are fairly black and white, but when someone's face-to-face and you're trying to implement the ordinance, I think that's where it can go, go good or go wrong. And I, the thing that I have best to compare it to is how we deal with other nuisances right now, like tall grass and weeds and junk on a property or a junk vehicle on a property.
Three strikes, or?
Right. It's, it's a, it's a process to get compliance, and it's, it's, it's not a heavy-handed process. It's, it's educational, it's, it's, you know, we have a hammer if we need it, but that's, that's the last resort. What we plan on doing in terms of implementation, there's no emergency clause in this ordinance, so we would, we would expect it not go into effect for thirty days, and in those next thirty days, we would, we would begin a more concerted educational campaign, get people copies of the ordinance, and start out slow with, with implementation and enforcement. So it's, it's not as if we'd be writing citations next week on this, certainly. We expect this will take probably thirty to ninety days to kind of get up and running.
Justin, was there a reason you limited it to downtown instead of all business areas?
I would say that from a staffing perspective and enforcement perspective, we don't have the resources right now to do all commercial property.
So this is a start?
This is kind of a start. There are some communities that do property maintenance for rental properties. That's very controversial and has been done in a few other places. I know there has been some talk of that before from, at different times, from commission members and staff, but we're not talking about that now either. We're just, just talking about getting started specifically downtown.
I think this is an excellent initiative. I think you've done well.
Thank you, ma'am.
In the downtown area too, not all throughout the C four district, but in a good portion of it, a lot of those buildings are conjoined. So what one neighbor does to their property is going to pretty severely affect their neighbor, and that is happening in some places right now. So I think this will help give us some incentive, give the owners some incentive to do something. So I think this will help give us some incentive, give the owners some incentive to do something about that, because it's not fair for somebody to, uh, to do that to their neighbors.
I just, I, I agree. I just think that we ought to be, you know, uh, understand, everything case by case, and kind of look at all the, the whole situation, maybe work out a plan to, to help them get in code, so.
Well, one of the things that I, I mentioned, and I don't know that we can do it, is when we roll this out, maybe we could do it in concert with the facade grants. So if somebody wanted to apply for those, of course, there wouldn't be a grant for everybody.
Right.
But we could do that, and also, uh, possibly, maybe our downtown task force could work with some of the local bankers to find out information for them, in case they don't know that maybe some financing will be available to maybe rehabilitate some of these buildings. So, uh, we're going to try to help them, you know, every way that we can. Uh, we're, we're not trying to be hard-nosed about it. There's, I think, a very, very general rollout plan on this.
Yes, ma'am.
It's just, yeah, the swap meet down on the end of the street. I just was worried about his situation, you know? So.
Okay, gang. Any other more discussion? If not, the chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing, so there may be other members of the public that, that wish to speak.
No, it doesn't say that.
It's not public, okay.
It doesn't say that. I'm sorry.
I make a motion to adopt the downtown property maintenance code.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second, okay? Mr. Attorney, do you have to read all that?
No, I'm just gonna read those top three lines.
Okay.
This is an ordinance that would amend the municipal code of the city of Shawnee by amending chapter seven and creating an article 17 to be the downtown property maintenance code, providing for severability and providing for codification.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let's vote.
It's just section seven?
Well, it's, it's a...
Is it the five, six, and seven, all that other stuff that they had up there? I'm sorry.
It's okay, I'm, I'm very...
Four, five, six, and seven, all those parts that was in there as we were voting?
Right.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Item number 16, discussion consideration and possible action on renewal of a non-exclusive permit to Vive Broadband LLC to maintain a cable communication system in the city of Shawnee. Mr. Erickson, would you share any thoughts with us on that matter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. The con, the existing contract for cable communications with Vive Broadband LLC expires May 21st, 2015, and accordingly, uh, the contract is before you this evening for renewal. On May 21st, 2007, uh, the city commission, uh, previously had approved an eight-year permit to allegiance communications to operate and maintain a cable television system within the city limits of Shawnee, and that permit was transferred on February 19th, 2013, by the city commission to BCI Allegiance, which later became Vive Broadband. So there's been some changeover, uh, in ownership since the initial permit was issued. Uh, city code allows for issuance of a 12-year permit. That is what Vive Communications is requesting. Uh, as by, um, as required by code, Vive Communications will remit to the city an annual franchise fee equal to 3% of annual gross revenue. And also, in accordance with, um, previous contract provisions, they have agreed to provide, uh, cable programming service to municipal buildings, as well as school facilities free of charge. And the permit also provides up to two public access channels, so we can continue, uh, the work that we, that we do and that we have for, um, for public access. And so with that, staff does recommend granting of a permit to Vive Broadband to operate and maintain a cable communication system in the city of Shawnee. Included in your packet is a presentation, uh, that, that Vive, uh, wanted to be included, which, uh, highlights the permit renewal and the operations of, of Vive as an organization. And also, what I found most interesting is on page seven of that presentation was the trouble call history, related to overall trouble calls and repeat trouble calls. And you can see that from January 2014 to, to present, uh, there's been a dramatic, a dramatic decline in, uh, in trouble calls. So I know it initially, it's my understanding, when Vive took over the system, there were a lot of complaints and a lot of service issues, and, and by the trouble call, uh, reporting information that we have, many of those, uh, have, those calls have been drastically reduced. In my five months in the manager's office, we've only received one call of, of complaint. I refer that to Vive, and they took care of it immediately. So, um, with that, there is, um, Mr. Dave Harwood, the general manager for Vive, is in the audience, and he can answer any, um, service-specific questions that you have, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you have now about the, about the permit.
I have a quick question. Is 12 years the normal term? Is that how long our last one was?
For, for some reason, even though the code has not changed, the last permit was eight years, uh, but the code does allow for a 12-year permit, so. And I would, I would also remind the commission that it's a non-exclusive permit, so it doesn't forbid someone else from requesting a permit, or some other, you know, new provider coming in. Does not provide for, for a monopoly situation, but, um...
City Attorney Carnes, did you find any legal language you were troubled with?
I had some minor language, and it was corrected.
Okay, right. And can we modify this contract if at some point in time that our franchise fee amount changes?
Uh, the contract fixes the fee, um, the permit, it's not a contract, it's a permit, and it fixes the fee. It's one of the things that, that we have same, we have franchise permits, uh, for example, with, um, OGN, and, uh, you're, you are setting, you're setting it, it would take an agreement from both parties to change it. It's not that it can't be done, but it's, it's not something that the commission could unilaterally impose. This is kind of the time to set it. There are franchise agreements that last 20 or 25 years. Ours is actually relatively short.
Do we have another 12-year agreement with another, I mean, is OGN 25 years, or is it...
And I, I haven't even looked. I think 25 for OGN, that's what I discussed it.
Well, that's correct.
And I'm not sure where we are even in that, how many years we are into the halfway through, maybe.
Okay.
Oklahoma natural gas, everybody that's in the right of way.
Mm-hmm.
I guess I'm going to have to ask this question of Cindy, if I may, Justin. From an economic standpoint, 12 years, this rate, which...
It's 3%, which is pretty fair for average for a franchise fee. Is there business growth, which I hope that does, our franchise fees will increase?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, uh, that being said, um, uh, any further discussion? If not, the chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
Motion to approve the permit.
Second.
Motion approved, second. Let's vote. Motion carries. Okay. Item number 17, discussion consideration and possible action to determine selection process for a municipal judge. I will turn this over to Mary Ann, but I do want to preface all this, so that the public and everyone knows this, is that Judge Jones has been an unbelievable judge for our city, and he has resigned as of May 6th, and through our deal, we've had an interim, but he has not closed his practice. He is still a practicing attorney, and he is still there in case we have some questions to go to him and all that. He is not going and sit on the couch. So they were wanting to understand that. He is going to, uh, still have an active practice.
Well, one thing that, uh, he had to do on weekends was, uh, what do you call it, Mary Ann?
Arraignments.
Arrangement on weekends, so this frees up his weekend, so that he doesn't have to do that now.
Are you going to, Mary Ann, talk about emeritus and all that, or you want me to?
I'll let you talk about that.
Okay, there's a couple of things that I think we as a commission should do for this gentleman that has served this city so well and so long. And I would like for us to seriously change the name of our courtroom and name it after him. I mean, it's 49 years, and he's done an unbelievable job for our community, and he will be missed. The other thing is that I'd like to, uh, consider, uh, Mary Ann to make him a judge emeritus, is that right? How do we do that?
You could do that, uh, you know, it's done as an honor to various people. I think for either one of those things, you'd want to have a resolution on, you know, next time.
On the next commission.
Uh, how, obviously, you need to authorize the purchase of a plaque, uh, for the area there outside the courtroom. When this, uh, building was constructed after the tornado, however many years ago that was, um, he was the one that, uh, felt like it was really important that we have a courtroom that looked like a courtroom, where we could have jury trials if we needed to, where we had an actual witness chair, and all, a, a place for him, and all the things you need to do to make a courtroom feel like a courtroom, as opposed to just some other room. And, um, he lobbied for that, and got successfully lobbied through that, which I'm not sure was an easy task at the time, but he has taken great pride in that, and kept it up, and, uh, has been, um, he's been a mentor to a lot of court clerks, and, uh, there's only, only one judge that has served any longer, and he's only ahead of him by, I think, two or three months. So, uh, that judge is, is, is still, uh, carrying on, but, uh, it's, he's very well-recognized here.
He's a very distinguished gentleman, I tell you what, if you haven't had the pleasure. Now, I think we need to get this process going. And do we need action by the commission to, uh, go, uh, advertisement period, or go and talk to me through this? We gotta find another judge.
You gotta find another judge. The situation is, the, the code provides that if the judge has to recuse himself for his ill or his absence, generally gone on vacation, that the mayor is authorized to appoint a temporary, basically a temporary judge. And so, um, Robert Butler has primarily been that person. And, you know, if, if Judge Jones is gonna be gone, he just has someone let the mayor know, and the mayor signs that. And that is what happened here, is that, uh, the mayor has appointed, uh, Robert Butler as our temporary judge, until y'all are able to decide what you want to do. There are very few requirements. You have to be a lawyer, uh, you have to be admitted to practice in Oklahoma, uh, and that's, uh, pretty much it. You have to be a resident of Shawnee. Uh, there's no requirement that you have any particular training, there's no requirement that you have experience as a judge, perhaps in another municipality. So, you know, that, that leaves you a broad range of options. You know, you can, can do this any of a number of ways.
But do we need to get authorized or something to get posted?
Well, that's what I think you need, I think what you need to decide is whether you want to do a wide advertisement and have a lengthy period, if you want to do a more limited advertisement and have a shorter period. Get those, um, responses, and if you want to interview, uh, interview them, this is one of the positions that...
Reports to the commission.
That you appoint. They're independently, independent of the city manager, uh, one of, one of the three appointments that you make directly. So it's kind of up to you. The, because of the local nature, you may want to just, uh, put it in the local papers and then be sure it goes out to the Pot County Bar Association.
Sure.
So that all the lawyers in town, um, know about it, and give them an opportunity to apply. At some point, uh, you're going to need to determine a salary, and you probably, you will, I, I, you may, I don't know, you can ask people to suggest, you can publish an arrangement, or you can just negotiate that when you decide who you want to hire.
Okay, but we need to get, we need to get it going. So we need to get a motion or something to...
Judge Butler, yeah, Judge Butler doesn't want to do this just real wrong.
So we need to entertain a motion to...
Establish some process.
To establish a process of, you know, what I'm saying, post it, so that we can get some applicants in here for us to probably do.
Is there a reason we wouldn't use something like what we did for the, uh, city manager, except without the recruiting tool?
Because we want to keep it local with this.
So, you know, I think that we could just do a, you know, advertise, keep it open 30 days, advertise in the local paper for 30 days for applicants for judge.
Well, 30 days, it gets way past June 2nd.
I think I'd like to hear from HR on this. HR, do you think we could get an applicant pool, uh, within 30 days of, of a good selection for us?
I'm sure you probably would. 30 days is a little longer than we normally advertise, but if you would like to have plus 30 days...
What do you normally do? A, a week or two weeks?
Two weeks.
Two weeks? Okay, that's what we normally do.
Oh, we get 30 days.
I didn't mean to say 30 days if we only did two weeks.
I will assure you that every lawyer in town knows this position is make it now.
So they might be thinking, yeah, I got you.
And could, could you look at kind of some salaries for us there also, HR, and, and provide some guidance to us?
We've got some guidelines, I think, already. We know from OML and some things that we could talk at night. Okay.
I, I've just got a question for Mary Ann. Aren't there some judges that are elected? Is that the case?
Not some position, not...
Not for municipal judges, all right?
They gotta be an OU grad, right?
Okay, let's go. The chair will entertain a motion for us to go out and advertise for two weeks. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have, uh, Commissioner Schrader, I have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, let's vote. Okay. Motion carries. Is there anything else, Mary Ann, that we need? I think that pretty much covers it.
Not with regard to that. I'm going to kind of assume here from your discussion that you would like a resolution on for next meeting to recognize Judge Jones.
Sure. And also, you need to have it for, to name the...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that emeritus staff will take care of all that stuff. Give us all the paperwork. Thank you very much on that. Okay, uh, I guess it's time for...
I have good news this time.
Oh, good. Number 18, acknowledge the sales tax report.
Well, I have, do have good news. Um, the month of May, we did, uh, receive $71,000 over last year, which is up about 5.13%. We received $1,466,000, but what's really nice is we are 11.7% over 2013. And I wanted to let you know the use tax was about the same as it has been the last few months. That's coming in strong. And accounting and state were up for the sales tax. Also, we are starting to see some revenue from the new businesses.
Wow, that's great. That's exciting.
The food places, or the...
I'm not legally able to say.
She said the new places. Okay. Any questions?
We got some a little bit last month, and we got some this month, so it's starting to...
Trickle.
Trickle in, and once we get, you know, we, we do have to, um, some dealings with Hunt Properties, properties that they get two cents, but we'll take care of all that once all the adults are in.
That's very good. Any other questions, though? No? Thank you very much. We look forward to you telling us a good story next month.
I have a good news, you're a very good news reporter.
Yeah, I know, okay. Mr. Erickson, city manager's report?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, the purpose of my report this evening is, is really centered around, uh, one main thing, and that is it'd be a municipal pool, Shawnee Splash, that we're diligently trying to complete. I sent an email out to you last week indicating that it looked like we were not going to make the, the scheduled opening of May 23rd, and that is still true. Unfortunately, uh, we've got about 12 inches of rain over the last 14 days, which has been great for the lake and great for our water supply, but, but just giving us heck trying to get these projects complete. So, and you've probably seen the Health Week advertisements, probably got this flyer in, in your mailbox. What this means going forward is that the scheduled opening on May 23rd is going to be deferred. I don't have a date yet. We don't want to, I did not want to post a date and then have to defer it further. I can tell you that we're, as soon as we can open the pool, it will be open, and if that's a soft opening for a few days before we do a big grand opening celebration, then that's, then that's the case. What's changed between last week and this week is that we were previously going to still have the community picnic and have an open house for the pool on, on Saturday, even though we weren't going to open it to the public, and, uh, we've looked at the weather forecast and conferred with the Venus Foundation and the pool, uh, committee chairman, and we decided to hold off on that event as well. So we will do a town picnic and a big community event, and open the pool. It will just be deferred, uh, hopefully just, just a week or two.
I, I do want to make, along with that, everybody needs to be aware, I hate to see if the pool's been delayed, but I'll also tell you, if I had the choice of filling that lake up so that we have water for that pool, it's a lot, it's a lot better for everyone, so it's a good trade-off. So, it's a good trade-off, even though it's, it's difficult for you, the contractors and everybody working at it, but-
Somebody posted on Facebook, Facebook, a picture of a, a little donkey that was stranded on an island up in the lake, but he got rescued.
Okay, go ahead. I may interrupt, but that's a good thing.
Want to mention, so just everyone's clear until the public's clear. The, the event on May twenty-third at, at Woodland Veterans Park and at the municipal pool complex is, is deferred at this time. The closing of the, the non-opening of the pool will also affect the scheduled events of Health Week on the twenty-ninth, May twenty-ninth, which was the Splash Day games. That will also be, be deferred as a result. Now, the, on May twenty-seventh for Health Week is an event called Crazy Kids Day at Boy Scout Park that has a series of events and activities beyond just the splash pad. So, we're still hopeful that the splash pad will be open by the twenty-seventh, but even if that's not open, all those other events will happen on the twenty-seventh. So, so, in summary, the two events that are being canceled are the events on May twenty-third and May twenty-ninth at the Shawnee Splash Clock Center.
Now, did I hear that there is water in the pool? The pool is
Yes, sir.
There's water, and, and so it's a matter of just getting things
Can't get to it.
Can't get to it because of the rain and
Right.
Can't pour concrete, all that, so.
Why don't we just go to the lake and have the party there?
I have one question. What is the status of the maintenance building out at the lake?
I will have to defer that to James Rice.
Okay, and he's not?
He can provide an update. I don't know if you want, have him do that now or in the Commissioner's comments?
No, go ahead. I just want to see if you have more?
I do not, no, sir.
Okay. Do not have any more, huh? Okay, then
I think James is going to tell us about
James going to tell us about that?
The status for the, the building at the lake, I think, is having the same problems as any other construction project. But I'm, I'm hoping to get that, that project started soon. We have signed contracts and given a notice to proceed and, and have the bonds and insurance in hand, so we'll be getting on that hopefully pretty soon.
Okay, that's Sage Mill Construction?
Sage Mill Construction.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then that answers the question on the manager's report. Next item is number twenty. You're on first again.
Yeah, this is for the award of the, the Boy Scout restroom project. As you remember, we did go out for bid for that, and, and within the bidding process, decided that maybe we should relook at it again and make that restroom a little bit bigger to, to maybe accommodate more people in the restrooms than, than what would have. And therefore, we went out for bid again, and on the, the second time we went out for bid, we got three bids in, which I've included in the, the memo, with the lowest bid being from Craig Contractors for ninety-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars. After staff has talked to the contractor and, and looked at his, some of his projects, where he's worked before, what he's done, staff's recommendation on this is to award the project to Craig Contractors in the amount of ninety-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars. And that is kind of a, we've had a couple of grants involved in this that, that's helping pay for it, and I've included that, that budget with that memo, one from the Vitas Foundation for two hundred and three thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents. The tobacco settlement fund for a hundred and ten thousand. There has been some public fundraising for fifty thousand to go along with that, which brings the four hundred and six thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollar project to the city. Portion of that is forty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Wow.
Wow, that's a good deal.
May we approve the recommendation of Craig, Detective County? Have a motion to approve that? Did I hear a second from you, from Mr. Doctor?
Yeah, a second. Can you tell me, here's one thing, is Craig the one that was out of Shawnee, or is he out of?
He is, he's kind of out of the Shawnee-Ducump area. He used to work for Jordan Contractors when Jordan was a construction company.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's vote. Motion carries, okay? Any new business?
No, sir, no new business.
Okay, it's time for Commissioner comments, and I guess I will start it off. I received a call from a couple of people about Martin Luther King celebration day coming up, and I wrote down the date and left it out in my car. I'm sorry.
June eighteenth.
June twelfth. I got that on the twelfth.
Yeah, June the twelfth. But I want to say that each commissioner is asked to be in that parade, okay? Just to drive your vehicle or whatever it is.
Celebration, yeah.
So, we need, we need you to really put that down, and anyone else, please put that on their calendar. That's a, a day that I, I did not log in. I mean, I left that note out in my car, so I thank you very much for that. Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner comments? Okay?
Well, I'll say, just, just a couple of things, and I'm almost afraid to say this because I'll probably leave somebody out.
Don't say it, Dan, if you're afraid.
Well, I'm not that afraid. But the Shawnee baseball boys won state, I think the golf won state, and the track team, I think, is
Girls' track.
Girls' track. Anyway, I just, kudos out to the, to the teams. I know that there's some other teams, but outside of, since them, Shawnee's done well, but Shawnee this year has done really well in the state championship games. We're proud of them.
I saw that golf score. What an unbelievable win, huh? Almost fifty strokes or something like that to win that to the next team. That's great. Good comments. Anybody else? Okay, and to save time for some people in the audience, I am going to recess our city commission, and I am going to call to order the Shawnee Airport Authority, okay? And we do have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval in the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Just
Sir?
I was, I was going to ask if we could pull B, just real quick, item B over there. I just wanted to ask, just a question about the Vibe space.
Okay.
Okay. And I second with, if we pull
I would pull item B.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we can vote on pulling item B?
No, just don't consent agenda.
Okay, let's vote on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Item A. Item A only.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Second.
Motion carries. Let's go to item number B, and you can share us what
Sure. I just caught a quick summary.
Yes.
For you, Doctor. Okay, thank you, Mary Ann, Commissioners. Yeah, Vibe's kind of in a tight spot. They currently are over at the Gordon Cooper Technology Center, that's where their call center is. I think Gordon Cooper had expanded some of their, their classrooms, and so Gordon Cooper needs, excuse me, Vibe needs some more space for their call center. They, they weren't too sure how long they might need to rent this space, but they asked the airport if they could use some existing space out there that shares some room with the Department of Public Safety, as well as some existing office space that Vibe has out there right now. The, the terms are a little unorthodox, just because they're a little unsure how long they're going to be out there. I know they've had some prospects on, on where to move the call center, and so we're just kind of going six, every six months, we're just going to either renew or they're going to go somewhere else. The key thing about this is that they do need to do some improvements. Primarily, the office space is just mostly cosmetic things, ceiling tiles and things like that, but the major repairs that they're going to do are to install some restrooms in there. That building's an old Army Reserve building. There's an old kitchen area in there that's been stripped out. There's, there still are some places you can install, you know, restrooms and some sinks. They do believe, and I think, who was it? The contractor? Midwest, Midwest out of Seminole is going to be the contractor to install all the, or do all the repairs and install the plumbing. They will have to have a permit to do that.
Do they have parking in that little
No, this also includes about twenty additional parking spaces. There is a spot where the airport owns some property that we've allowed the YMCA to use for like kickball and some picnics and things. There's a parking spot within that, within that area.
They're going to pay for it?
No, there, there's already existing parking spots right there. Yeah. So, they're going to use that area for the, for the time being. Like I said, it's kind of hard to tell how long they're going to be there. They're kind of estimating about six, six months to about a year, something like that.
Is that the usual cost for that kind of square footage, twenty, two thousand seven hundred and twenty feet to go for?
We, we, we base that lease rate off of their similar, if not exactly the same, offices that are right next door to these. We did give them about, give them a discount, give them a break because they're going to put so much money into this, they had to make it, we had to make it work for them. That's why there's kind of a staggered lease rate every six months.
And once the improvements are done and they do vacate, we'll have a bathroom and we'll be able to go
It'll belong to us.
ADA bathroom, right?
Yes, absolutely.
And are we going to have to put out much cost for the twenty parking spaces or?
No, they already exist. The YMCA has a school bus right there, just have to ask them to move their school bus temporarily for us. And that's, that'll be the only thing. No cost to us.
Motion to approve item B. We have a motion and a second. Motion carries. Any new business?
No, sir, no new business.
Okay, I will adjourn the airport authority, and I'll call to order the municipal authority. I will declare we have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda. Have a motion by Vice Mayor Herr, a second, I guess, by Commissioner Daxter. Okay, item number two, discussion, considerate, item passes, by the way, can, discussion, consideration, possible action for the dissemination of the December tenth letter from Oklahoma Water Resources Board, OWRB to Shawnee citizens?
Yeah, this was a, this was a carryover from the last, the last meeting. We had a little discussion, and there was discussion about that the citizens should, should be, at least have the opportunity to read the letter that we received from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board. We did post it to our Shawnee website. Not sure how many people actually read the website, but it's, it's out there. There was some, some investigation to actually how much it would cost if we published it in the, in the water bills, which is pretty high. I'm, I'm thinking it's too high. It's like eighteen hundred dollars or something like that to publish it. You know, I'm not, not sure we need to do it, you know, that bad or not. Justin did, did do a little bit of checking just with the local papers, that, you know, we could actually have the entire letter published in the paper quite a bit cheaper, you know, for three or four hundred dollars, something like that, if we really wanted to do that out there. But I'm not, you know, I'm not so sure that we want to do that. I, I do think that we might be able to combine that with something that I think that we desperately need is, is have somebody from OML or the Corporation Commission have a generic discussion on how rates are established, because it's pretty obvious that people, we even have some commissioners that don't exactly know how the rates are established and, you know, how we could, you know, at some point, what it would mean to get a rate reduction, what it would, you know, what would cause a rate increase. You know, there's, there's lots of, you know, utility counting and, and rate cases are very complicated for electric utilities, water utilities, and I think if we had some sort of a generic presentation, a special meeting where invite the public and the press, I think it would be very, very good for everybody to hear and understand exactly, you know, how, how the rates work and how our citizens pay for our water and sewer infrastructure.
Well, let me kind of keep the order straight, and maybe I'm wrong on this, but on this matter, we, we need to have a motion and a second if we want to do item number two, then new business, I think, is probably what you just spoke about, huh? Possibly.
Because it's different than this. Wait until next month or next week to do it, or next commission meeting to do what you're talking about? Bring it in the OML or whoever?
Well, I don't know that we can get something that quick. I, I think it would take something scheduled, and it would be, you know, eight weeks out, six weeks out, four weeks out, something like that, to get something scheduled on the books. You know, and I'm sure our attorney would need to kind of preview everything that they would want to present.
I agree. I believe that discussion needs to be held and that the public needs to be made aware. I would like to make a motion to remove item number two from the agenda.
Well, we can, we're already talking about item number two.
Well, we're really not.
Why do we need a letter? I mean, if we're going to have instruction given to us by OML and a water board, a resources board, why do we need the letter out? So, I'm just moving to, to remove
You said you didn't think we needed
That's what I was just saying. I don't know that we need to publish it if we have that type of a meeting. I, I agree with you, Lisa. I don't know that we need to publish that. I think that, 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 you know, that meeting could cover, you know, this is why the OML, or excuse me, Oklahoma Water Resources Board sent this letter.
So, we don't need a motion to remove any of this letter?
No. We can make a motion to pass it, and then we can vote it down.
Well, you can vote, you can pass it or vote, I mean, you can
We don't have to take no action.
Prove it, deny it, it can be withdrawn, or
Do we vote on a withdraw?
No.
Pardon? If the, if Commissioner Hall wants to withdraw it, he can withdraw it.
Okay. You want to draw, I don't withdraw, I don't remember.
We already voted this down last time, though.
Here's, you guys
We deferred it.
No, we deferred.
Deferred it last time.
We deferred it, yeah.
Well, not, actually, I think you asked to put it back. I don't know.
It didn't pass, I remember.
It didn't pass last time. Just make a suggestion
Sure.
That you continue this item and that it be enlarged to discuss as not, just as an additional way of dissemination of information. And when we talk about that, y'all can kind of decide if, if you want to do it and who you think you might need to come, so that you can set that up. And if other people here want to suggest you add somebody else, you could do that. That way you have a, an opportunity to let people know you're going to talk about talking about it, that you can kind of get that put together. I will tell you that municipally, it's not really going to have anybody to help you with this.
I went to a class that OML put on, on rate cases.
Well
And I, I, they may have had somebody come in, but it actually was, was pretty good, you know? I mean, I thought it was pretty good. I learned a lot, but it was sponsored by the OML.
There's, may have been, or there's also, they do a seminar about what you can charge and when you can change it and what you have to do. And I taught that one, so you may have gone to something else. But as a rule, they're not rate makers and they don't do that kind of
Well, Corporation Commission has, probably has a staffer that, I mean, the way the electric utility rates are done, it's regulated, it's different than us, but it's done very, very similar on rate cases for utilities.
I think you could ask staff to kind of bring you a list of people that might be the resources, and then if y'all want to also look at it, then you can have those resources.
If, if we do that, one of the things that I would like to make part of that is to have our public utilities department, the Shawnee Municipal Authority, give us an overview of the financial condition of the SMA, you know, because I know we met on this before and we talked about it at length, the capital improvement projects and how those could be rolled out. And the Smith, Robertson, Bolshwayler gave us a, a very good summary of a phased plan on how those could be financed. And we have a lot of things that are getting paid off, you know, the five hundred thousand dollar front load on the PCDA loan, I think this is the last year, so that frees up about five hundred thousand a year. I know that there have been a lot of, a lot of money spent on a lot of equipment and improvements for the utility department that went undone for many, many years until the rates were raised because money was not, not there to do it. And I know they're still paying back loans to the street department, so once some of these things are paid off and some of the loans are paid down or paid off, you know, there's money going to be freed up there to do some of these things. So, I would like, in fact, what would be more important to me than to have somebody come in and give us generic statistics on water utility rates is to educate us on what kind of condition, financial condition our SMA is in.
Well, I think that would be useful.
We could just include that as part of this whole thing of this work session. Let it be part of bringing people in.
I think we could do both.
Sure. A lot of that's already in that report. It's already in there. It says all the capital needs projects.
I think it would be a good time for a review.
So, the one thing that's not in there is probably from how we would finance all those capital projects from a timing perspective.
You might need our bond guy to come in and speak. What's his name?
Chris Gander.
Huh?
Chris Gander.
Yeah, have Chris Gander come in and talk about how those things are fina- I mean, it might be a real good work session that we could have invited to public.
The source and the cost of manning has-
Sure.
Has an impact ultimately on-
Well, we've got a lot to do. Let's move on here, and how do we want to word this? Somebody word it, everything.
So, I'll make a motion to continue my agenda item.
With it to be enlarged.
With it to be enlarged.
To arrange for workshop.
Whatever, however Mary Ann says.
Okay, to be enlarged. We have a motion.
Reflect you want a work, a full workshop on utility issues, including capital needs, costs of financing, how rates are set, the full blown-
Financial analysis of where we are today.
I want to make the letter part of that communication with the public. I guess I don't understand that, Mary Ann. Every time I try to do a motion, you correct me. And every time, I don't mind instruction, but I'm beginning to find you a little problematic. Every time I try to make a motion, I don't get good guidance.
Commissioner Shaw, if I can have some advance notice of what you want to do, I'm more than happy to help you get that properly worded and on the agenda in the proper format so that you can have your discussion items and your motions the way you would like to. It's what I do at the request of all the commissioners, and the open meeting law is what constrains how this works.
I have to ask for instruction from you before and not been given guidance.
I'm sorry, I don't recall when that happened.
Well, I'm a little confused, too. What if, I mean, I'm not sure how this is going to be put on the agenda, but what if, I don't think it's important for this OWRB letter to be sent out?
Well, I'm really confused.
Well, I'm asking a question. Please don't interrupt me and I won't interrupt you. My question is, what if I want to vote on part of that but not the other part? What if I don't want the letter to go out, but I do want to hold the session?
The item that's in front of you does not require that it be put out in a mailer or by advertising. It talks about a dissemination of the letter. Now, if you want to go ahead tonight and vote down a motion, someone wants to make a motion for dissemination of the letter and you vote that down, you vote for that and it doesn't get disseminated. If you guys vote tonight and you don't want it disseminated, then that's done and you still have your-
You can have the education session.
Yeah, I think we should keep them separate.
So, I'm a little confused here, and I apologize if I interrupted you, Linda, but, you know, I think that we're all for openness and transparency, and the citizens have a right to see the letter. I don't see a problem if we're going to have a forum and educate people in saying, this is the letter we received from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, and this is what it means. I still get questions about it, right? I know you may not, but I do. So, you know, I, you know, I've retracted from wanting to put it out in all of the water bills because of the cost of the nature. I still think that's a really good idea, by the way, but I think it would be better in this education forum where we have the press and we have the public that wants to attend, that are interested in it, at least be a chance to see this letter, and although we might not be able to ask a lot of questions about it, we, you know, could have at least somebody explain, this is what this letter means, this is why Oklahoma Water Resources Board sent this letter out, right? It's part of how we finance our water infrastructure. It's, you know, it's just, it's the citizens' right to know.
And I disagree with that, not about the citizens' need to know, because I do believe we need transparency here. As a matter of fact, I'd suggest all communication that you've had, Commissioner Hall, between yourself and Mary Ann Carnes be made open to the public at any type of request in regard to this particular action, and I would like that information sent to me.
We had no communication on the item we're talking about. The request went to the city manager who told me. We haven't discussed it at all.
I believe that we need to make all information public in regard to this action if this is indeed what Commissioner Hall is requesting be made public.
Well, we don't have to disseminate this letter to the public in order to have it included in a packet during the training session, right?
I don't think that's what he's saying. I'm hearing he's, he's not saying mail it out or anything. He's saying have it at that forum or training forum.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We don't have to vote to include this in that packet.
Yeah, they could put it in a packet.
Yeah, just put it in there.
Just like they have reviews here.
That's not an item that I think we should have to vote on.
So, how about I make a motion to approve this, this letter?
Wait just a second. I think, hang on just a second.
Do we have, do we have a second, though?
This is what we're finding out. Is there a second? What's on the floor?
Commissioner Shaw's motion to remove the item, and then there wasn't a second, my understanding to that.
So, that one's died.
Okay, and then we have Commissioner Hall's motion to continue the item to be enlarged, and we'd have to quit it, because I don't have all the language, with no second.
Could she remove it?
I thought we were discussing-
Point of clarification, I was advised I couldn't put it on to remove it. Okay.
We could have seconded that one, okay.
I'll second it.
I think we're all confused.
Okay. All right, so you second the one that-
Right.
To enlarge this, the letter.
To be part of that packet.
No.
When we meet.
Dissemination of information.
That's not what it says.
Now, what we're going to do is, the motion is that when the next scheduled commission meeting, we'll discuss and decide a recommendation on staff who's going to make a presentation and stuff like that.
No, that's not my understanding.
Yeah, that's why he's motioning.
I don't know what Justin's understanding is.
How about this? I'll make it easy. We, I'll, whatever I need to do, I can withdraw this motion. I'll make up my own motion. I'll make up my own agenda item and get it on the agenda next time, you know, and make it easy on you, right?
Okay, yeah.
There you go. So, we're just withdrawing this number two, man?
Yeah, I'll just, what do we need to do to cancel it, withdraw it? Whatever Robert's rules and orders say I have to do, I'll do it. I'll withdraw it.
Do we have to vote on any withdrawing? No, motion's withdrawn. Okay, any new business?
No, sir, no new business.
Okay, I want to adjourn the Shawnee Municipal Authority, and I'm going to reconvene our commission meeting, and item number nine, I'm sorry. It's way over here.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, discussion, consideration, possible action to enter into executive session for the purpose of reviewing information on candidates related to the hiring of city manager pursuant to 250S, discussing employment, hiring, appointment, demotion, displing or resignation of any individual salary public officer or employee. Chair will entertain a motion for us going to executive session on this.
I so move, but I would like to invite our HR person to join us.
Okay.
Is, okay, with Tammy, is that, because she's going to explain the binding. Okay, second.
Have a motion and a second. Let's vote.
Who's going to the party? It's just-
Motion carries. She's heading to executive session. All right. Item number 24 is consideration and possible action on matters discussed in the executive session for the purpose of reviewing information on candidates related to the hiring of a city manager pursuant to 250S, discussing employment, hiring, appointment, demotion, displing, or resignation of any individual salary public officer or employee. Is there a motion in this matter?
Mayor, I have a motion. I'd like to make the motion to invite three candidates as final applicants into interview on Friday, May 22nd, at a special called meeting.
I'll second.
That was seconded by Commissioner Hall. Okay.
Commissioner Shaw, would you mind repeating the motion, please?
The motion is to invite three candidates as final applicants into interview on Friday, May 22nd, at a special called meeting.
Thank you.
When you have to have the time of that meeting.
You'll need to have a time.
We do, okay.
Yeah, because for a special call, the time has to be set, so if you guys have an idea of what you want to do.
I think our special call meeting is at 2:00.
Okay.
Which involves-
Commissioner's call meeting at 2:00 Friday, 22nd.
And where?
2:00 PM.
At the Expo Center. And, Justin, if you would be so kind, and we'll need a room for, we're also, we're inviting department heads. Okay, Tammy, you'll take care of all that. Tammy knows what's going to be done, okay? Okay, we have a motion and a second.